According to her so that she can go back through and make sure she's all caught up. Alex Roy has accepted a position with Park City, so he has, he's left us, we'll miss him. But we'll be hiring soon and we'll bring someone on that can contribute to this project as well. So that's a little update on our team. And let's go through introductions and if you don't mind, just for organization's sake, I'll go ahead and read out names. As I see them on my little participants list here, so Mary Simpson.
Yeah, I'm Mary Simpson, I'm on the Hooper Planning Commission, I think. Everybody knows who I am. Happy to be here.
Amanda.
Hi, I'm Amanda France, I'm also on the planning commission.
Bryce.
Unmute Bryce.
Oh, sorry about that, yes, I am also on the planning commission, sorry about that.
Great, we have Cindy.
I am on Hooper City Council.
Mayor Fowers.
Happy to be here. Mayor of Hooper City.
Jamie.
Yeah, Jamie Barnes, good evening, everyone, happy to be here.
Marita.
I don't know, Marita Stanfield.
I'm just a Hooper City resident.
Okay. Listening in, good for you, Marita, thank you.
Great, and we have Nathan.
Yes, I'm on the planning commission.
And is it Lisa Harris?
It's Leslie Harris.
Leslie, thank you, I've just got the LH.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yep, I'm Shawna Vander Schaaf, I'm the city recorder, so I'll just be documenting everything that you guys discussed today for public record.
And happy birthday Shawna, thanks for spending your birthday night with us.
Hey, thanks.
We'll try to make it fun. Okay, and anyone, I think, oh Garth, Garth, you just joined us, do you want to introduce yourself?
You want to introduce yourself? No? There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, Garth.
When it comes to this, so it takes me a minute.
That's just fine. Okay, anyone I missed? Okay, and Sheldon has also joined us, but since he just popped on the call, we won't. We won't bombard him, okay, we may have a couple more trickling in, thanks everyone, more than anything, you know, you all know each other for the most part, but that's. That's a really good mic check, sorry, oh, what was that Lisa? Oh, just, just knowing.
Just coming in.
Hi, welcome, okay, so that works as a pretty good mic check, just to toggle on and off your mute. Um, alright, so our agenda today, it's what's in your packet, and would it be helpful if I share the packet, or does everyone have that in front of them?
I have my copy, but I don't know what anybody else has.
I have a copy.
Okay, we'll just go through.
I'll drop it in the chat, just in case.
Thank you, Christie, yeah, that, we'll just go through that. Throughout our meeting today, so you can kind of flip through and be able to read it a little bit better on your screen than you would be able to on our meeting, and that way we can look at all of. Look at each other, so our agenda is to go through our public outreach summary and comments, that's going to be the majority of our time today. We also have some draft vision statements that we'd like to review with you today, and these are just what. What we came up with based on the existing general plan, based on our open house and survey results, as well as the focus groups. So we asked folks in our open house to react to some initial comments, and overall had a really positive response, and how we want to bring those. Those vision statements to you to get a reaction. That we want to talk about the general plan structure, and kind of give you a homework assignment that's in that packet, and you may have already looked at that and begun to work on that, and maybe not, that's just fine, we'll go over that in our next meeting. And then we'll adjourn and set a date for our next meeting, we can do that at the end, so. Um, right, so let's just jump in to kind of where we are now, and this is our, that icon on that first, those icons on that first page are our schedule, so. We've done our first round of research and community input, our team has been working on some data analysis, some mapping. We're refining that and we'll have our draft existing conditions for you coming soon, you can review that and make sure that everything checks out and all of our data is, is what you. What you have as well, and then that'll become part of our general plan, it's essentially just, you know, where you're at today adopting this or working on and adopting this general plan. Kind of gives good context going back in a few years. To why the decisions that were made in this process may have been made, and also it's just good, good to know, good to know about your city. Mostly demographic data, a little bit of environmental transportation data. Kind of the typical stuff, so that's where we're at as far as phase one, we're moving into this phase two, which is drafting the vision, right, and this is putting together all of that initial input that we've gotten from your committee, from our engagement or survey. And trying to come up with, you know, a first stab at what might become the vision within the general plan, and then we'll take that back out for community input. And then start preparing a plan, so that's where we're at in our little process, any questions about what we're doing? Where we're going?
No?
Cool. Mary's always good, giving me a good, quick answer. I'm looking for the head nods too, go ahead.
And just about the, um, the public input, and I noticed, I, as I'm reading through this document, it said that. That the newsletter had the information, and I just, I don't know if it's my mail carrier, but. My house, we receive the information always after the fact.
Oh.
And so I don't know, I know, I mean, I get letters from the city that are dated 10 days ago. And so, and I don't think that I'm the only citizen in the city that that's happening to, and so I'm thinking something needs to change about the whole public input thing. I noticed that there were 23 attendees, and I think maybe that's why is we're not getting the information in a timely manner.
That could be, that could be the case, and Shawna, let, let me know if you have any information on the timing of our newsletter. What we can definitely do better in the future is get that out sooner, we can, we can advertise sooner.
Well, we sent the, we sent that entire, we sent the newsletter and the entire packet out separately, in two separate mailers. They were out there for almost a month in distribution before they were due, as far as getting notice for. Meetings and things of that nature, there haven't really been that many, and it would be up to the committee as a whole to see how they would want to notify that, but I'm, you know, I only do what. State requires me to notice. Now that this is the core and body, so that would be posted on Facebook, that would be posted at the city website, that would be posted on the state notification website, that also would be posted three locations around town, so I posted at the post office, the water facility. Company, and then also the local. Sinclair, the gas station, so and that's posted almost a week prior.
Okay. Okay. Maybe it, maybe it's just my mail route, I don't know, I need to do better about looking at those other sources, I guess.
You bring up a great point, though, we didn't have, you know, outstanding. Participation at the open house, we did have really good participation in the survey and in the focus groups, so we're, we're feeling pretty good, open houses are often poorly attended, and there's the additional. Hurdle of it being virtual. And we are feeling good that we got such a tremendous, honestly, a really great survey response in our focus groups, we had a lot of people at each one of those, and we'll continue with those focus groups. But we will shoot to have more people at that next open house, certainly, luckily, we had multiple ways to get the feedback. Which gives us some confidence that we've got the right information, and we can always, you know, add an open house in, whatever need, need be to make sure we have the right amount of input in this, and then we've also talked. Various members of this committee, we've discussed the potential for post pandemic, you know. Bringing the general plan, adopted or not, wherever it is in, in that time, bringing it back out and trying to do something in person. Just recognizing that it's really not everybody's thing to do virtual engagement, not everybody has. Access maybe to a computer or the desire to learn how to use some of these programs, so making sure to just. Create a space for the public to get together in person when it, when it makes sense for your community. And, and in the world. Any other thoughts on that, numbers and attendance, and we'll go through the amount of survey responses and the survey results, but anything more general, questions or comments?
I was just going to say, one thing to consider, if you want to get additional outreach out to the public that's not in electronic format, so if the committee is thinking another mailer or postcard of some kind. Please just understand that it takes us a long time to put that information together, we have to graphically format it into something that we can mail, then we have to print it, those prints have to come to us, and then we have to get that to the post office, so we need additional, at least an additional 10 to 15 day lead time, if that's a direction that you wanted to go.
That's great to know. Okay. Shall we jump in?
Okay.
Okay, so these results contain, so we've got kind of a visual representation of those questions that were just quantitative, and then we've also got comments in there, summarized and a few specific comments that we thought were notable. And then we have summaries of our open house meeting and each of our focus groups, so that's a lot to get through, it's good rec, a good record to have, it'll be an addendum to our general plan, perhaps a more summarized version of, of what you're seeing now. But it also, it highlights a few really interesting things, and so we'll go through question by question and kind of see if, see what you think and, and discuss anything that's not matching up, so you can see 737 responses, that's really great for a community the size of Hooper. Thank you to Shawna and to everybody who worked to get this survey out, especially those who typed in handwritten responses, I think that that was huge, that's certainly not something we usually do, and it was clear that. A lot of people wanted to respond that way by writing down on a printed survey and bringing it into city hall or mailing it in, so thank you so much for the time you spent doing that, really gave us what I think is some great. Great numbers here, by district, we do have representation in all of the districts, some, some a little bit more than others, but there's not one district completely left out, or one district that's really dominating here, so hopefully. Hopefully we got a pretty good representation of the whole city of Hooper. Any questions on overall the numbers or that district information?
Yeah, I was glad to see that it was pretty well spread out. District two is a smaller, much more, less populated area, so it stands to reason that we would have fewer responses from there, but. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that it's pretty evenly spread out.
Awesome, and we can in the future sort by district, and if we need to pull out any, you know, any specific information or specific survey responses, it kind of goes survey by survey in that case, but if it's interesting to folks, we can do that. Okay, so that question one there, we have what would you like to see more of in Hooper, check all that apply, so as people could have responded to multiple different answers on this one, right, the far and away trails and pathways is absolutely the winner here. We also have parks and places to eat up there, recreation facilities not far behind, shopping was the least popular option, 17% of. Folks said they want to see more of that in Hooper. And there were some other responses, so other would include. Things like, I'm not sure if this captures all of them, it may, but nothing, keep Hooper as it is, of course, that would be a response under other, right, open space and farmland, lower taxes. Road and sidewalk improvements and services for seniors to age in place, so those were the additional responses from people, you'll see some similar comments in the rest of the comment section, any surprises or comments there? Okay, and as we're going through, feel free to take us back or forward or wherever, I want this to be time for you to discuss, but may ramble on.
Megan, I might make a comment on one response that was surprising to me, and that was lower taxes. In Hooper, we, we don't have a property tax here, we have, you know, a district tax for our cemetery. So I was a little surprised at that, I wasn't sure just what someone meant, I'd be interested to know what was meant by that.
I noticed that as well, and it may be an education piece, maybe some residents don't really realize that there is, there is no city tax, there's a Weber County tax, it's not, it's not low. It's, it's not way above the standard either, but I, I thought that was interesting as well, maybe that's something to communicate in the general plan or in other ways, just that Hooper hasn't historically had a city tax.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good point to bring out, is that we don't have a city tax, and so the taxes that are coming to the property owners are out of our control. And secondly, I think this survey went out about the same time that property taxes were due November 30th, so they're busy filling out this survey and paying their taxes at the same time, so they might have been a little upset.
Fair point, taxes can't be negative, so I don't know how we can address that one other than just getting, you know, more information out there. Um, okay, question two, parks should serve as a center for meeting and community activity, generally, people agree 51, anywhere between. Depending on how you want to look at it, about 80% of people agreed with this statement, it makes sense. And it's where, you know, tomato, tomato days happens, and it sounds like that's generally a good track to be on, only about 2%, 2 to 3% disagree with that statement. This next one, the area around 5500 south and 5500 west should be walkable, main street area with outdoor dining and small shops. This one surprised me a little, given the reaction we've had to discussing this area, there was a 32% strongly disagree and 15% disagree. And more of like a 30, sorry, I wolfed down my dinner before this, and I don't think I did a good job. And then about 30% that agree with this statement, any thoughts there?
I was kind of surprised at that as well.
Yeah.
And maybe it's just the, the wording of it, because I know some discussion was brought up about walkable, and that it was to be, you know, quite hazardous to somebody walking. So I don't necessarily think that they don't want a commercial retail area. Maybe if the question was worded differently, and, but I think the walkable might have thrown people off a little bit, because it's probably not really safe to walk on that street, as it is right now. But anyway, that's kind of my thoughts, but I still think the community wants some form of, you know, things to buy some kind of good and services, whatever that might be.
And Amanda, you have another good point in the chat about the proximity to the elementary school and an increase with traffic. Absolutely, that was, that was brought up in our focus group about commercial development, overall, we did have a really positive response to that. You know, it was a subgroup of, a focus group, right, is a smaller group of people, but I think Bryce, I absolutely agree, I think we can dig into this deeper in our next round of outreach. Ask more qualitative questions, ask people to kind of write their ideas down, do a little bit more reading and digging through their comments, sometimes you write survey questions, and we think, yeah, that captures it, but we've got some deal breaker word in there or something like that, it's, you know, there's always one in every survey, so. I think we can dig deeper into that, it's, it was interesting to me, it didn't seem to be the sentiment in other meetings.
Um, just the one point, I think a lot of people equate. Main Street downtown with a larger community and maybe more development, and that may be why they were like, no, we don't want develop, more development, so that, that's, that's kind of where I would think about that too, but. I don't, you know, not knowing what the vision was, you know, I can see why they would be inclined to say that.
And Cindy, to your point where they're talking, where you're thinking maybe they're looking towards development. If you look ahead to question number four, where they're talking about should have a commercial area dedicated to retail and office space, responses are pretty close to the same. So I think, you know, people were looking at walkable main street and commercial. Kind of in the same vision. I'm surprised that there was, you know, 33% that were strongly disagreeing. Those numbers kind of surprised me.
We agree, do we think it's a good idea to dig into this more in round two, outreach round two?
I think, I think definitely.
Okay.
Anybody?
More about. Go ahead, Bryce?
Do you have an opinion on whether we should dig into this deeper?
Well, I think. I think we can dig into it deeper, I think the question is, is if, if that's not going to be main street, where's it going to be? I mean, where would you like to see it, I, I don't see any other place in Hooper, not that it's, it's part of the general plan now, but. It's trying to set up that way, and if they're going to change, if they have another opinion where they'd like small restaurants or shops or for that to be in the future, where would you like that to be, I think personally, it's the perfect place for it, but yeah, I think we need to understand what, you know, dig into that a little bit further.
So if, if not in that location, then where, is that what you're saying, Nathan?
Yeah, where, where's going to be the possibility to do it, not running into a different zoning that's already there, that's ideal, it's already zoned that way, it's kind of been held that way, there's no, no construction that's really going to hold that up. And we already have some small commercial going that route up in that area, so. Yeah.
There is a question in here, and we, we will get to it, I'm sure, or maybe we already have in that question number one, oh yeah, 34% of respondents did say. That places to eat is something that Hooper should have more of, that's not an overwhelming number, but maybe part of this is absolutely the way it's being worded is. Main street, maybe that's conveying a lot of development, commercial and retail, not even necessarily, or I mean, sorry, office and retail, that's not necessarily what could go there, right, it could just be a couple of, couple of services, right, places to eat. Entertainment, more, more entertainment focused, so. There's more to, to get at there, and our focus group for commu, commercial development was really engaged, we've said we'll bring them back together, and perhaps even more frequently than other groups, so that might be a good group to dig into this issue a little bit more with.
So what did Amanda just say in her chat?
I can read it, and Amanda, feel free to chime in here, but it might be helpful when we provide a clarification about not having a city tax, to explain that having commercial options in Hooper will generate more funds. There was some discussion in the focus group about having off-street parking that would be accessed on 5700 west, that may help with the elementary and traffic concern, agreed, good ideas.
True.
Okay.
Sorry to. Sorry to interrupt, but I'd say it's, it's worth noting that in other conversations and other focus groups, like the active transportation one, for example, that it was brought up that some streets may need safer facilities for walking and stuff, and, and. That type of thing, so those could be addressed in other. Topic areas as well.
Agreed, good points, okay, let's keep going through here, Hooper should provide more housing choice to include duplexes and townhomes, you know, strongly disagree here. Thoughts, comments? Is this what we expected?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think people, people equate duplexes with apartments and things like that, and you know, higher density, and they do not want that.
Right, I think we're hearing that, there, there are some comments all specifically relating to ADUs later on in this that we can, we can discuss, there was. Some more support for ADUs than certainly there was for duplexes or townhomes, okay. Hooper should encourage single-family homes on larger lots, so kind of the flip side of this, we have strongly agree and agree. Far and away, we have about. 10% that are neutral and 10% that disagree. And I'm not sure if they disagree with larger lots or single-family homes or both, right, but they disagree with that statement. Jump in at any point here.
I don't think that, I, that doesn't surprise me, either one of those. The responses for questions five or six. Kind of, kind of what we hear at every planning commission meeting.
For the most part, it's other than a few. Outliers, for lack of a better term, that's what we heard in, in most of the focus groups and in the open house as well. Okay, in which spending areas would you rather the city make additional investments, this is hypothetical, right, we didn't give them any kind of a dollar amount or anything like that. Um, these are, these are fairly close, economic development was the lowest, makes sense, after we've seen that there's not a big desire for major commercial or office development. In any way, and then recreational trails and protecting farmland are, are the highest there, protecting farmland is an interesting one, you know, as far as how a city could invest in that. Recreational trails, I think we're seeing as a big winner throughout this survey, and the rest of them are kind of in the middle, parks and civic spaces is high, road improvements is high. Sidewalks is in there, right, nothing was, nothing was zero, but it does seem protecting farmland and recreational trails at the highest.
So how would a city protect the farmland?
Yeah, that was, it is, it is interesting, any thoughts, I mean, other than.
Mr. Mayor, can you shed any light on that?
Well, sometimes when I hear plans about moderate to low income housing and how a city should, this is certainly hypothetical, what I'm saying. But sometimes in agriculture, we never apply those same principles, like, and I don't know how we ever would, just like with moderate to low income housing, how do, how does a city make sure? That a house is affordable to someone, we, we really don't have any control over that, so likewise, I don't know how we would ever control. Keeping farmland. Unless, I don't know, sometimes there are ways, you know, that, I don't know that the city would really control it, but there are ways that a farm. Someone who wants to keep land in farm can sell the development rights, and then they can pass that farm on to their family. So they have money that comes in from development rights and they still have the land, so there are tools, there are tools out there, I've just never seen any of those applied in our area. But, but they are available if we, if we wanted to look into that.
That's interesting. I'd like to know more about that.
That kind of tracks with my, you know, my thought as well, is there are certainly policy tools, like a transfer development rights, not incredibly common in Utah, but it does happen, and it's typically in regards to protecting ag land, agricultural land. I've never seen any kind of like a fund to, to save the farm, you know, I don't know that that exists, it could, I, I don't know.
I think agricultural easements are your biggest tool.
Agricultural easements, is that what you said, Jamie?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the biggest tool that's used, I don't know how often it's used in Utah, but I think that's the biggest tool to preserve the farmlands. It's usually like a partnership with the state or federal government to preserve the farm.
Okay, so is there, does that involve someone buying, buying up that easement?
It usually just involves an easement with a state or federal partnership with the farmer who owns that farm, just to preserve that farm under an easement for agriculture.
And it would entail funds?
Mm-hmm, yeah, kind of like they do like conservation easements, you know. But this would just be for agriculture.
But how could, how could a city invest in an agricultural easement?
I don't know, on a city terms, I think it's more, got to be the individual property owner.
The property owner.
I mean, the city could encourage it.
And, and let somebody know that there's a tool available, like.
Yeah, and like, you could tie it back to when people are talking about lower taxes, because then you usually do get a tax break on things like that.
Okay, so if a. Okay, so if a farmer's desperate to sell his land because he's. Going bankrupt or whatever, then this is, this is maybe another option that maybe they haven't heard about. Okay.
What's.
Yeah, and I'm not super familiar with them here in Utah, but we could look into it.
You probably wouldn't know the economic difference between outright selling it and using this easement, would you? I mean, is it, obviously it's probably less money than just selling it, I would imagine.
Yeah, yeah, we, I could definitely look into it and see so that we could be more educated on it.
You know, I think it'd be good as a planning commission if we were more educated on. You know, other options besides just selling and developing land.
For sure. Yeah, I agree.
Perhaps there's a section in our recommendation, we can, we can do some high-level research on it and include it within the general plan. What's hard about that is it may or not, may not be, once we research it, something that the city wants to further engage with. Or we can include within our recommendation section of the general plan. A near-term recommendation to further research things like the agricultural easement and the transfer of development rights. The, the TDR typically comes with a density bonus, right? It would be to say. You can build double the density on this little sliver of land. But that, that's selling the rights on the rest of this land. So it's, it's kind of a trade-off, right? Where you have this. Opposition to density, whatever that means to people, or you have this oppo- opposition to any. Or, you know, micro, smaller development, smaller units. So it's a trade-off there. But that's, that's that option. It's more of a policy tool than it is a financial tool.
My point was that I just think the planning commission. And the city council maybe needs, take an opportunity to get a little more education on other. Options out there besides just selling and developing land. Because I don't know anything about agricultural easements. I didn't know that they would, you know, how that they could be financially beneficial to a property owner. So I'd like to learn more about it.
Okay, let's keep moving through. Any other? This number eight, which natural resources, oh, did I skip ahead? Yep, I skipped ahead, sorry. Now I just wanted to ask if there are any other comments on number seven and the different options there. The spending areas that folks would rather the city make additional investments.
Well, it's good to see that they want to see more recreational trails and improvements in the parks because. Some of that's already in the works, so that's good to know.
Awesome. Okay. Number eight, which natural resources need the most attention in order to improve or maintain the quality of life in Hooper? Please prioritize the following. So everyone ranked these and this is where they fell out. So farmland is the. The natural resource that needs the most attention in order to improve or maintain quality of life in Hooper. In the survey taker's opinion, an open space followed by water and wetlands. And then we have parkland, soil, and then the Great Salt Lake. So this seems to track with what we've heard so far.
Yeah.
Okay, go to number nine. How would you rate growth in Hooper over the past five years? It's kind of a sliding scale downward from too fast to. At fifty percent plus to too slow at one point five percent. So folks are feeling Hooper's growing too fast in the last five years. Then ten through thirteen, where please indicate the importance of each statement. So new housing should meet design guidelines set by Hooper. Somewhere between important and in the middle. I can stay in Hooper two and through retirement is very important. There are comments as well about, you know, aging in place type tactics, you know, making sure that there are. Amenities and resources for seniors. People should be able to rent housing in Hooper. It's somewhere between somewhat important and not important to folks. And then I want my children to be able to stay and live in Hooper. Very important at fifty point sixty-eight percent and then somewhat thirty-three percent. Only sixteen percent of folks said this is not important. This of course, this is, this is a, a challenge, right? Because there's wanting your kids to stay here and, and. Not have to leave due to prices or a lack of available housing and then, you know, of course, not wanting. Too much additional of available housing out there.
Well, and, and I think the way that that question was worded was a little bit catchy, a little tricky. Because most parents want their kids to stay close by, but do the kids want to stay close by?
That's a question we didn't ask.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think that that's a little bit tricky where. Most people would say, yeah, I want my kids to live and stay in Hooper and be close by. But do the kids want to stay?
Good point. And we asked, are they, you know, do they need to be able to stay? I think we're getting at with this question. What's more important, you know, more housing units and, or the ability to buy a unit or, or rent here, right? We're kind of caught in the middle with these answers. Any other thoughts?
I was just gonna say, I think these two questions, some of these questions that we talked about, this is where. I think it'd be really important for planning commission and council to come up with policy. Cause is, is it that our residents are adverse to density or they want to see, they're okay with a smaller density with open land? Or maybe they just don't, what they don't like is subdivision sandwiched between subdivision, subdivision, subdivision. So would they be okay with townhomes pocketed in between large swaths of open space that connect and treadways?
Okay.
One thing I want to come back to briefly here, on number ten, new housing units should meet design guidelines set by Hooper City. There was a pretty good response to this in favor. Maybe we can dig into this further in our next outreach. Round. What, what do you think the design guideline should be?
Yeah.
It's not an answer we're getting out of this survey, right?
I agree.
That would give, you know, we wouldn't write design guidelines through the general plan, but it would give. Planning Commission and City Council a lot to go off of in looking into that, right? To just have some initial understanding of what. Residents think that that should be. Okay, let's keep cruising. And stop me at any point. With continued population growth projected for Hooper City, what types of development and growth would you like to see in the city? Check all that applies. So of course, family farms is high here, single-family residential is high. Parks and, and preservation, I think is cut off there. That's high. And then much lower, we have retirement community at thirty percent. Roughly twenty-eight. Corporate farms, low at thirteen percent. And multifamily residential at nine percent. So with these check all that applies when something is that low. It indicates a lot, right? It's not just that it was ranked low. It's that they didn't, they had the opportunity to check all of these. They could have selected them all, so it, it is a pretty big discrepancy there. Any thoughts?
Brings me back to what we talked earlier in, in the discussion about the family farms. And zoning those, the interesting in Hooper, whenever as a planning commission, when we have rezones, usually it's family farms that are being sold. And usually they basically say it's not economical to farm anymore. So that's why we're selling the family farm and doing something economical, you know, with the land. And it's going towards the retirement. So it's, I, I, I'm wondering if it's. If it's people that we get to the meetings all the time that basically say, oh, we just want to do any more development. We want to stay as it is. Or if they're checking the box more that they want the family farms to stay and not develop rather than the farmland. What does stopping people right now, stopping them from doing their family farms? That's the real question. There's nothing that's stopping them from doing it. But all the developments happening is basically the farm, family farms is getting out of that zoning to, to make more economical choices.
Absolutely. In our open house, for those that were there, you, you may have heard this conversation. There was a. A farm owner, a farmer in our open house and his responses. Were really interesting to me. And we can go back and look at those notes, but just, he was kind of saying. I'm with you. I don't want to see the farmland disappear either, but nobody, nobody is taking up the torch and I'm getting old is kind of, that was kind of his sentiment. So I think that this, this is the big question for Hooper. It seems like this survey is certainly telling that. People want the farms to stay and the farmers need an option, another option besides selling. Okay, how frequently do you access the front runner station in Roy? Most people do not, or they do it rarely. One percent of folks do it daily, two percent weekly and three percent monthly. So pretty low there. One thing we've talked about is whether Hooper needs more transit. It sounds like there was a bus line that used to come down and it doesn't anymore. Likely just because ridership was low. This kind of shows you why the bus line was connecting to that front runner station, right? And there's not much ridership there. So maybe, maybe something to bring up in continued meetings, but it doesn't seem the biggest priority. That next question is similar. How important is increasing alternative modes of transportation? Because we grouped them all together, we've got bus, biking, walking and horse riding trails. It's a lot of different options. Kind of have a mix of results. Not important is twenty-two percent. So those folks are probably just focusing on vehicle accessibility. But we have about eighty percent that think it's important to have these alternative modes. And then which do you feel is more needed, new parks or improvement of existing parks? This is interesting. Seventy-five percent of respondents said. Improvement of existing parks. Any thoughts there? As expected?
Um, I was a little surprised that it was so lopsided. Because with some of these are newer growth that's going on, I would have thought that those people maybe would like to have a park in closer proximity to their. Homes, every, you know, stuff that's growing out there on the north end and, and up on the east end, but on the east end, they have access to the parks in Roy. I'm surprised that it's that lopsided, but I know that a lot of people commented that they want. Pickleball and basketball and recreation facilities. So I think that they're lumping that together with their. Improvements to our existing parks, which is good because that's what we're trying to do.
Great. That's awesome. Pickleball was mentioned more than five times in the comments at least, so.
Oh, yeah.
Pickleball's big. And I have yet to play. If somebody would like to treat me to a post-game or post-pandemic game of pickleball, I would love to. Another thing with this question is what kind of improvements? Maybe we dig into that a little further.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to expand that and ask what kind of improvements.
I think we should just ask in, other than pickleball, what kind of improvements do we? Just kidding, we don't have to do that. But I think the answer might be pickleball.
And in, in the meeting, I was, I was in the meeting with the parks and the recreation and. A lot of other options did come up, as you know. So, you know, when you get to that, we can probably discuss those. So.
Yeah, well, we're getting there now. So we've got comments here and we don't have to go through each one of these. These were just notable comments that Maddie pulled out. There's a, of course, there's more than this. There are comments that are much the contradictory to what we're seeing in the, the way the data breaks down as. We've got this, we need more affordable housing for young families, smaller lot sizes, more businesses to offset taxes. Right? So I think she made a, made an effort to be sure to pull out comments that were outliers. We can. Create most of the plan to fit what most people want, but if there are ways to also bring in. Elements that please smaller subsets of the population, we can absolutely look into doing that as well in our, in our draft vision. Definitely comments about needing more parks, improvements to parks. As we go through, maybe, and if you've already read through, anything jumping out at you?
Um, I'm looking at the very last comment where someone said, maybe make it a stipulation for builders to create. More open space within their development. I don't know, as a planning commission, if we can. Make that a requirement, or I guess it probably needs to be some kind of an ordinance within our zoning. That if we have more than twenty homes in it, or a, a number of homes within a development, that there needs to be set aside open space and. Walking trails or something to that effect.
Yeah, it's, it's totally a tool within your ordinances and you can require it when. Something I've seen cities have some success with is requiring it to be usable open space. Acquiring some percentage or some acreage per ten units or whatever it is and saying that it must be usable open space. You don't get that. Zero scape. That's great too, right? The landscaping, but you don't want this swath of landscaping that nobody can use. So that's also. Definitely a tool. And it makes sense if you're seeing all of these new subdivisions, you know, all this pressure, make sure that. You're not dealing with the lack of parks later.
The, the, the catch with that though is. Who maintains those open spaces? Does that then become a burden for the city or do? Do we require them, those developments to be under an HOA umbrella? So that they've got something to take care of and maintain those parks? You know, I mean, those are all planning things that we need to, to consider. I love the idea of having the open spaces and more parks. And keeping, keeping it open, but we've got to look at who's going to take care of it in the future.
Absolutely. Other comments jumping out at anybody? Also that summary below, you know, Maddie tried to capture groups of comments together. It's a lot to read through. This is helpful. There was support for ADUs mentioned within the comments. That may be something to dig into deeper as well. It's. Not something that Hooper hasn't talked about, right? Maybe fresh on everyone's mind, but there seem to be more support for ADUs than there was for any kind of attached multifamily.
So we recently. Modified our ordinance.
Right.
Cindy, is that correct? Councilman, I mean, ADUs are now legal. Which they weren't before.
Mary, I have to concur on that one with me.
The mayor?
Yes, as far as having one, can you hear me okay? As far as having one that can rent it out or a non-family member. Can live there. Yes, that has changed. And that's true for even a, a basement apartment as well. So. That's, that was part of our plan to meet what the state required to, to bring about more affordable housing.
Okay, and, and so you've adopted that piece of.
We have.
Okay, is it owner occupied? A requirement that the owner has to occupy the main unit or a unit?
Oh, yeah, on, on the property, yes, the property owner has to. Be in the, the main house, you know, in the, the main.
In the principal. The principal residence.
That's one thing I was curious if we could look at maybe. And I mentioned this in our planning commission the other night, but you know, we have a lot of residents out here that are getting older and. You know, they may have a bigger home that's multi-level and it's hard for them to. Go up and down the stairs and they may want to build. Maybe a little, a smaller dwelling on their property that's one level. And then have them be able to live in that and rent the primary residence out. So. I know from what Mary was saying, there was some concern about a landlord not being there and so. The property being run down or not cared after as much. But I think if, if there, if we could look at doing something like that, it would open up. The door for a lot of these people that want to stay in Hooper long-term so that they could live in the smaller unit. And rent out the larger one. And you'd still have the person that owns the property living onsite. Not to mention if we already have other properties in Hooper that. Are single-family residences that people are allowed to rent those out. There's not a landlord living there. I just think that maybe that's something we could look into as an option.
So potentially more to look at there. Other thoughts? Should we go to the open house summary?
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll let you guys like read through these. And you may have already done this, but you know, on your own, but good to. A good summary here is these core competencies. These are, these were generated in breakout groups. With the attendees of the open house. So the core competencies that were identified include managing growth. Having a community feel, feel like every voice is being heard. Provide understanding of how developments will impact the community before such developments are started. Community feedback opportunity prior to final approval of developments. Understanding of who the developers are. There's a sense that they are all big rich out of state. Understanding of who the developers are, there's a sense that they are all big rich out-of-state developers. And avoid a big sea of housing in Hooper, so the theme is here, right? Absolutely, in keeping with our theme. These general discussion topics are good, it's kind of where the conversation went, you know, based on the different prompts that we had. There was support, you can kind of see under bullet two. One or two local small shops could benefit Hooper, right? So not support for the major commercial or anything, but could be a smallish Main Street area and community members question both the need for and viability of anything larger than a small Main Street. So I recall anyone, if, if you were there in that open house, there wasn't, there wasn't support for a major retailer, big box store. But definitely for the more mon paw type retail, there was a little bit of support, there was quite a bit of support. Okay, any questions there?
I've got a question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up just a little bit, just because I someone in there mentioned a roundabout. And I know there's a lot of talk about our streets being safer. I don't know if they're safer than stops, you know, a four-way stop sign or what, but maybe I know somebody that's gonna do a, a impact for street studies. Maybe they could find that information out for us. And I don't know if there is a place where we could utilize roundabout that this person said on 5100 South and 5100 West. So I know that caught my eye, I mean, just kind of curious.
Isn't that where they just redid that whole intersection by the canal? On 51 and 50, oh, it was 51 and 55?
I don't, yeah, I don't. This is close to your house, Dale, isn't it?
51 and 51.
Yeah.
One block east and one block south, the more I live.
Anyway, I didn't, I didn't want to get you off track, but that caught my eye. You said we could back up.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of just general research out there about roundabouts, I think they're very situational. It might be a good idea to have a transportation engineer take a look. That's something we could, we could probably find either within our shop or a quick consulting ask. If that's something the city wants to look into, probably would be something to address in a more specific trends, you know, a more specific study for that, but it could be something that is mentioned as a next step within the general plan. To look into revising that in, in intersection. And the pros and cons of a roundabout, there are good ones and bad ones. You've all driven through bad ones, I'm sure. Spit out the wrong side.
I just might make, mention in this group that we have been approved for a study. So we met a week ago and, and that will be ongoing now for the next while. And we'll have a chance to have input, but there is an engineer, you know, someone that's actually that's what he's trained to do. And he's going to look at the city as a whole. The positive thing was is that Hooper City is already laid out in half a mile grids. And so that's a good starting point for him to kind of go through and and look at that. So anyway, we, we have, we do have that off the ground, so.
That's wonderful, depending on how our timelines match up, we may just want to reflect that work within the transportation master plan here. The more high-level version of it, right, we're just, we've just got big lines on the map, but. Go ahead, Mary.
No.
Okay. Other thoughts? Can keep cruising. And there are the comments and themes from the focus groups and I, I do encourage you to kind of read through. There were some focus groups like the land use side, where I think we need to get more specific with questions for them in our next round. And then there was, you know, the commercial group where I think they could have talked for four hours and, and kept going, which is wonderful, we want to reconvene that and make sure we complete that conversation. And just hear from the larger group of residents that took the initial survey, hopefully they'll take another and get down into the details on this commercial development question. There seems to be absolutely two sides of that coin as far as in support or not. But I imagine what's been described here by this commercial development group would go over a lot better than some other options for what that commercial development could be. Any thoughts?
I have a comment, sorry, I missed, I wasn't able to comment for a lot of this because I was in another meeting at the same time, so I apologize. But as far as going back, when you guys were talking about the question on the survey where people think that the rate of, that Hooper is growing too fast. And one of the things I wanted to mention that we may want to put on a future survey, just to get a little bit of feedback and see how people would feel about it, I spoke with the recorder up in Manaway and, you know, they're a smaller town. And so they've had some of the, some similar struggles that we've had here in Hooper. And I took some notes, they have, they have it where a developer can, can come in, but they can't do any more than 15 homes in a year, like per phase. So they can do multiple phases, but they can't go over more than 15 in one year, 15 homes in one year. So they told me they have a developer right now, excuse me, who's doing eight phases. And they have another developer who's doing 10, but they can only build 15 homes a year. So it will take them eight to 10 years to put that in. So they're growing, but they're controlling the pace that they're growing. And she said that you know, if a developer goes over 25 homes, right now they've had it where they have to give so much land for a park, but they're in the process of rethinking that because they really don't need more parks when they have a main street that's full of holes. And so they're trying to come up with some ideas where they could use, you know, the development to help fix some of the infrastructure. So I don't know if that's something that we could maybe look at, or if people would be open to that. But I think that might be, I liked that idea of doing something like that, so that we could still allow development, that we could kind of control the pace. And I think some of these studies that we're doing, finding out what our infrastructure can support and also being respectful of what people want our city to look like. Kind of coming up maybe with a number that would fit in with that of how much development we want to see and still be able to take care of those other needs, if that makes sense.
Amanda, we've talked about that a little and I haven't been able to find the specific piece of code. But that could be something, again, that could end up in the recommendations section of our general plan as, as kind of an implementation strategy of any vision statements that we have about growing, there was a term, it's in our vision statements, we can get to that in just a second, but growing in a way that's smart, not, not necessarily, there was kind of a concept by the open house group that wasn't no growth, it was just responsible growth, thank you, Christie. I didn't want to say smart growth, because it's kind of like a buzz that has this other meaning, right? But responsible growth is what they were talking about.
Right.
Okay. Let's jump in, it's eight o'clock, want to make sure that everybody gets out of here by 8:30 to preserve what's left of your night. But let's jump into these draft vision statements, and now this is a first step. This, like I said, these are, these were come to based on the survey responses, based on the open house feedback. And based on what's in your general plan already, what's in your existing general plan. Which the, the structure of that one is a little different, so these are meant to be overall vision statements capturing several pieces of the plan. So then you might be working on the land use element, maybe citing a couple of these vision statements and working on the transportation element, you might be citing different statements. Did folks review these, any initial reaction? And, and these are, all edits are on the table here. Anything we're missing or anything that doesn't capture the vision?
I'm just reading and comparing it to the current vision statement that's in our general plan.
Which is, yeah, then there are goals within each element of the general plan, so there's kind of, there's more in there now. So under these, we would have, here's the vision statement. So, so here's what our goals are based on that, and then here are the strategies to accomplish that. So that's kind of how the structure would be of each, each section.
So you're saying that we would then take number one, the, the draft for number one, where it says Hooper is a close-knit community and wants growth to be responsible and safe? And then make a statement as to how we intend to implement that vision?
Yeah, and there could be multiple goals for each vision statement and multiple strategies for each goal. So it can, it kind of accordion, it's like an accordion holder, it expands, right? And, and I don't know off the top of my head what a, a goal would be necessarily under number one. One of them might be maintain a certain amount of residential area in your land use map, and then we'd have the land use map, right, and strategies to do that.
Okay. Is your thought process that these vision statements would then replace the ones that are that's on the first page of our current general plan?
Yeah, and let's pull that up. The way the current general plan is, it has much more specific goals within each element and kind of scattered throughout. So the idea would just be to kind of have an executive summary of a vision. And so this is trying to capture those as well as the others. So if there's goals within that that need to be captured, we should incorporate those as well. Getting to the general plan to be able to pull that up. Maybe if my computer would load. Can share my screen. Okay. We have, is this what you're referring to, Mary, this vision statement?
Yeah.
On page two?
Yes. So the four bullet points in the, in the original vision statement are pretty much mirrored in the six. I mean, the six that that are on this draft are, they just elaborate a little bit more, maybe go into a little more detail.
Do we should stay on that? Yeah, what do we think? Part of, part of what I was going for here, reading these is the, the current vision statement, they're, they're good, right, they capture, they seem to capture it. They're saying things out into the future, right? The citizens of, of the city of Hooper envision a city that is rural in nature and provides for future growth while respecting land use. So they're, it's kind of like that it already is, and these things could be what the city could be. Can tell it's getting late, because I didn't explain that very well.
Yeah, yeah, I'm kind of not following.
So the vision statements that I provided to you are, they are written in a way that's more aspirational. Like Hooper wants to be a friendly place for small businesses. So whether or not that's true now, right, that's how we write the plan. And we can structure it either way.
I would put it out to our advisory committee on what I think we should get a consensus here, people. How do you feel about these drafts, this draft? Do you feel like we want to replace the one that's already in our general plan? Somebody speak up?
I think you could update it, I, I don't see a reason why you couldn't.
I think it absolutely needs to be updated.
Okay, Leslie, what is it that you feel needs to be changed from the old to the new? I'm going to put you on the spot.
And the old seems kind of abstract to me, I think it needs to be more specific.
Okay. Okay, good point. Anybody else? I'm not.
I like what Megan wrote, especially in number six, it kind of captures everything. Hooper has a rich history that should be preserved and honored. I mean, that, that one kind of captures a lot, so I'm, I'm, I'm for an update.
Yeah, and I like number two, that Hooper values their agricultural land and their farming community.
I agree.
The history component isn't really something, there's a history section of the general plan, right? But it wasn't in the vision statements per se.
I guess I'm a little bit torn on number three, just because I don't disagree that it's a friendly place, but I just don't know. I think we definitely want small businesses, I just don't know. I think we just have to be careful with that statement, I mean, I think people do want that, I just think. I guess if we went back to, did we have, we had a survey question on that, right?
It was kind of part of a survey question, let's go look.
I think that was more about like the walk of a main street.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm kind of tying it to, is, I mean, is that the overall, like, I guess why I'm torn on it is, are people gonna are people gonna tie small shops to small businesses or, and say, no, that's not really what we wanted, or?
Yeah, and I actually was kind of looking at question one, where it's, you know, places to eat, for example, came up, it's not overwhelming by any means. That seemed to come up in discussion more than it did in our survey. Like we've said, there, there was just more support for the, the Main Street in discussion than there was in the survey. And we've acknowledged that it could be partially how the question was written, or it could be that the people that showed up to things are looking for that and the people that wanted to just take the survey aren't, and that, that's also fair. I did have a hard time structuring that vision statement or compared to the others, you know, I wasn't sure. I didn't want to say Hooper incentivizes or encourages small businesses to locate here. I was trying to keep it kind of medium.
And I'm, I'm thinking, my personal feeling is, and this isn't a representation of anybody but Mary Simpson, is that item number one, Hooper is a close-knit community and wants growth to be responsible and safe. And I think that that is a good umbrella to cover what item number three would be. I don't know that we need to specifically state that Hooper wants to be friendly place for small businesses. I would omit it if it were me.
Yeah, I kind of have that feeling too. I mean, I just think it's going to be interpreted differently to everyone when you say small businesses. I mean, small businesses to one person is something different to someone else.
Maybe we could clarify that a little bit on the next survey that goes out, or even maybe being a little bit more specific on that vision statement and saying Hooper wants to be a friendly place for small businesses that contribute to maintaining a country rural feel or something like that, like. I guess, like you said, I think it was Jamie that said it just depends on what people interpret as a small business. I know there were several people that mentioned like little mom and pop type cafes or something like that. So maybe on the next survey, if we got a little bit more feedback or input on what people would support, and then we could either make that vision statement, expound on it a little bit, so it ties in with that, or I agree with what Mary's saying too, maybe we don't need to have a separate statement for small businesses.
I think you probably ought to have more clarification and maybe something on to address that in the next survey, because actually right now, we have a lot of small businesses in Hooper. But most of our home businesses, we have a lot of small businesses. So to say we don't want small business, I don't think you should discourage home business.
Well, and I think that's a perfect example, Cindy, like people probably just don't realize that we do have small business and that's what it's considered, you know?
Right, right.
This also brings up a This also brings up a, a really quickly, just a, a good point that these vision statements are drafted until the plan is adopted, right? So this is, this is just kind of seeing, is this initially reflecting our input that we received? And these will go back out for the public to evaluate, right? So, um, we can also ask clarifying questions like, do you agree with this vision statement? And then what would you change about this vision statement and see if, um, people will tell us what we're missing. Go ahead, Bryce.
I was just gonna say, you know, there was a big desire for people to have upgraded parks and trails and those kind of things. And, you know, with their comment was made, how are we going to maintain that? Whose responsibility is that? Um, so the small bit, our business is going to have a component in that for taxation. So maybe it's an educational piece where, you know, we're, we are going to have to have some kind of commercial development to take care of the parks and the trails and those kind of things. So maybe it's just a, you know, people don't realize that, but I think the small businesses, whether it's home based or even a brick and mortar, which I'd like to see, um, is an important part of our vision.
Trade-off based survey questions can be really interesting to ask, but they can also come off a little threatening. I, I like asking them, you know, a question like, you know, if you had to choose between enhancing your park system and having some small businesses to support that with sales taxes or, or not enhancing your park system, what would you choose, right? But that kind of comes off as this a threat. But they're, they're insightful, you get a lot out of them.
What if you, what if the survey was where it did something like, in our previous survey, there was a lot of support for parks and trails and expanding that. So in order to do that, we would have to have revenue. Would you support these, mark which of these you would support? And it could say something like small businesses such as home based businesses or small mom and pop shops. You know, I don't know, just making it so, so it doesn't sound as threatening, but you're saying, well, the majority of people wanted more parks and trails, and so this is the way that we can fund those. Which of these suggestions do you support? Or something like that?
That's a good idea. And what I really like about that as well is that you're referring to the engagement we've already received, reminding them, we're listening to you and we, we want your help solving how to, how to do what you've asked for.
That's a very good point, Amanda.
Yeah, we could expand that next survey to have some questions like that, and including a question, if there's support for it from this committee, a question like, um, there was a lot of support in our initial round of outreach for having folks' children have the ability to stay in Hooper. You know, what does that mean to you? Or would you support the following as a, as a means to, to get there? Um, getting more clarity on, on that kind of conundrum that we have. Other thoughts on these vision statements? Anything totally forgotten?
No, I, I don't see anything that's, that I feel like has been left out. I think we've covered the bases. Um, we talk about our history and we want to preserve it and we want to have all of our community members involved and we want parks and we want, we value our ag land and farming community and we want responsible growth. I think those are all really good points that kind of encapsulates how I get the feeling from the community is how we want to see things happen. So I don't, I don't, I don't think we've left anything out.
Yeah, I like them overall.
Just looking at your current general plan, the, it's not a vision statement, but there's a goal within the land use section about commercial slash light industrial land policies. And the note here is encourage commercial slash industrial development that is compatible with the rural atmosphere and that will not have an adverse impact on surrounding property and land uses. So that's what's in there now, just for reference.
And I don't know, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Oh, please.
Um, I was going to say, if anyone's just interested, so truly, we have about like a hundred and seventy-eight businesses in total in Hooper City. Um, I would say ten of those are commercial and they do go into, um, manufacturing or industrial type facilities. We have trust plans, you know, uh, sandblasting, things like that. Uh, and because they're, you know, manufacturing, they don't necessarily garner sales tax along with a lot of our home based businesses. They tend to be offices only, um, and so they don't garner a lot of sales tax. So, uh, if anyone wants more information as far as what we currently have, I'd be happy to get that to you, uh, so you can plan maybe for more public outreach or phase your, you know, questions better.
And it would be great if, if you have any quick resources, any kind of spreadsheet or anything, just to see that. And of course, not share the disaggregated data or anything, but
Sure, I can get that, yeah.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, so back to our agenda here, we have ten more minutes. In that time, I just want to discuss the homework ask. Um, and that is really just, take a look at the existing general plan. Don't spend, you know, you don't have to wordsmith it. We're, we're not going to just be editing that general plan, we're going to kind of start fresh, but the point of this exercise is to go through and, and it's in your packet here. Uh, I think it's the last page, page fifteen. Um, just kind of highlight things you like. It can be a whole section. I like the way this entire section um, is written. It can be comments and then note things that they're outdated or, um, they don't capture the point or it's confusing. If you're like, I don't like the way this is structured, it really doesn't give me a lot to go off. Um, and I guess I just want to reiterate, don't spend too much time, we're not gonna, um, that's not the only changes we're going to have to the general plan, right? We're going to kind of rewrite it together. Um, but it'd be great to see which sections are working for you. If there's something that your planning commission and city council have referenced frequently, um, or that seems like, if we would have referenced this, it would have solved some of our problems, right? That's okay too. Um, but just noting what you like, so that when we do get around to, and creating an initial draft, we can incorporate those things and, and just build on what's good and, and rewrite the, the less good. For example, there's no really major reason for us to rewrite your history section. That's been written, right? We can improve it. Um, we can expand on it, we can take out things that just maybe aren't as important, but your history is written, right? We don't have to redo that. So that's a very simple example. Unless we want to make up any funny stories and put them in there. Probably won't do that. Okay, so that's the homework and we'll be meeting in early March. So let's, let's find a tentative date that that can work. I will note, we have some, some studious uh, team members here. It's, uh, Maddie has class on Tuesdays and Wednesdays now. And, um, Christie Dahlberg with us is working on her MPA at night, and so she's got a Monday, Thursday. So no matter what, we're going to run into one of their class periods. Um, it would be great to have Maddie here. I, although I do know Tuesday works well for you. Any thoughts on the date of our next meeting, early March?
Sorry, I'm looking on the calendar.
Yeah, and I, I can pull up a shared calendar, but it might frighten you what it looks like these days with a little bit of turnover. Um, but we could do as early as the first or second. Um, or, or the fourth even, and then the eighth, the tenth.
Well, let's do. The fourth is, uh, city council.
The ninth with that. I, we could make that work.
Can we do that? Yeah, March ninth.
That works for me.
I don't have a conflict with March ninth.
Okay. Anybody that that does not work for?
What, what time, or is, do you think in the same timeframe?
Seven.
Okay. That works for me. I'll just, it'll just be a Zoom day. You probably have a lot of those, Megan.
Yeah, I can't wait to get back. I, I, I miss not looking at my computer screen and talking to humans.
March ninth is for me.
Was that you, Lisa?
Leslie.
Oh, that was Leslie, okay.
We've got both of you here and we can just see LH.
No, ninth is fine.
Great.
Okay. So March ninth at seven o'clock.
Okay, we will be, uh, we'll do this the same way, we'll get your packet before then. Um, if maybe you could reply to that email with a, if you want to do the general plan markup on your computer, that's great. If you want to put PDF comments on there, um, if that doesn't work for you, you can print it off and we can, we can pick it up from Shauna or you can scan it in, whatever, whatever works best for you. But, uh, maybe I'll have you reply to that email with the next packet with that homework assignment. See, you have a, a month to go through that. There's no
When would, when would you like our homework assignment to be completed?
So we'll send you a packet no later than the second. Um, and you can just reply, we'll, we'll ask for it in that email to reply to that email with it, or you can let us know it's, uh, done by hand. That reminds me, there was a homework assignment at our first meeting that we didn't get very many copies of. So that mapping exercise, if you've done that and you're hanging on to it, can you send it in to us? Just to, um, Shauna or myself is just fine, or to Maddie if you have heard.
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure which one that you're referring to there.
It was the homework assignment from our very first meeting that was sent out. It was just a couple maps. Um, and we just asked you to make any comments on those maps. Don't hurry. I mean, if it, don't, don't stress about doing it. We're getting a lot of great feedback in other ways um, from you and from our, the rest of Hooper. But if you have done it and it's just sitting there and you haven't sent it in, please do.
Okay.
Okay. Great. That is all I have. Anything for me?
No, thanks for being so organized. This, this, the summary of the, uh, survey is very useful. It's a nice tool for us to have to refer to.
Yeah, we'll work together in our next meeting on, on outreach round two and exactly what we should be asking and, and be sure to allow this group some time to review that survey before it goes out. Um, because it'll have more content in it, right? Because we've got information now.
Right.
We'll probably be picking up frequency of these meetings, if that's all right. Now, now that we've got some feedback and some stuff to work with for a while, it was just kind of the holidays plus the outreach round, right? While we're in the middle of a round of outreach, there's really not a whole lot to meet about, but once we're, once we're in between those rounds, there's, um, more to talk about. So we're kind of, it feels, probably feels like a little bit of start and go, um, but it's just the behind the scenes versus what we can actually work on and discuss in this setting. Megan, I had a quick question. I'm sorry if I missed this, but did you guys already talk about when the next survey is going out? So, no, we, we haven't talked about that. We'll talk about that outreach round more in the next meeting, but the timeline of that is really in the spring. Um, so we'll have that March meeting and then determine if we need another one before we kick off that next outreach round. It's very possible that we will. And it could even be a smaller format meeting of just those that are interested in reviewing the actual survey. Um, but we'll probably have two more meetings before that happens and they will be closer together.
Okay, good.
Plus an open house and, you know, plus the additional things. But the survey really is a hit. We got a lot of responses, so I'm glad that whoever people want to give us input, that works for us. Just, just tell us.
I, you know, that's, that's the biggest thing that we hear at every one of our planning commission meetings is that, um, the citizens' voices are never heard. We don't listen to them. And so when they had an opportunity to provide us their, their opinions on a survey, they responded well. And I, I think it's a good tool.
If you hear from anyone, Maddie is going to be, she's going to start working on putting survey one visuals on the website. So if you're hearing from every, anybody, like where did that survey end up? That's a good place to send them.
Oh, okay, good.
It's not up there yet, so I didn't want to like roll it out or anything, but that'll be up there. So we'll be able to say, we're not done yet, but we have heard you and it's, and it's part of the process, right? So we can
So a couple of, you think a couple of weeks and Maddie will have that up on the website?
I bet she'll have it up in a week, but I'll have her email the advisory committee once she's got it done.
Okay, perfect.
She was sad she couldn't be here tonight, um, but thanks for understanding.
Oh.
Life of an intern, balancing many things, so.
Yeah. So she, is she not going to be able to attend any Tuesday night meetings?
March may be in a spring break, but not, not until after the semester. That's not long though, so.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.